Nor, do you want to call?
Yeah. I can.
What if this attendees and Susan attendees? Oh, Dan Gallagher is in there.
He is, okay. He is, okay, we're good.
Okay, can we promote him? Judge Gallagher, we just promoted you to being a panelist.
I'm very pleased to have been promoted.
No problem. We're held back. Good evening. Oh, you were broadcasting, right? Good evening and welcome to the Village of Mamaronek Annual Organizational Meeting for December 6, 2021. This is where we organize our government for the next year. Tonight, trustee Lucas and myself are going to be sworn in. We were duly elected in the November 2 election. Congratulations, trustee Lucas. And trustee Lucas tonight will be sworn in by Judge Gallagher.
Thanks and congratulations to you, Tom.
And Nora, is it time to go?
Yes.
Okay. So trustee Lucas, it's an honor to be asked to swear you in this evening. And I thank you for your service to the community. And I would ask now that you please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Nora Lucas.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
New York.
And the law and regulations of the Village of Mamaronek.
And the laws and regulations of the Village of Mamaronek.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Village Trustee.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Village Trustee.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations. And thank you for inviting me to the organizational meeting this evening.
Well, thank you for coming. And this is sort of funny to have, you know, virtual swearing in. And I guess all I would say is I'm happy to start my third term. And I'm hoping that 2022 is a little easier on all of us than the past two years were. And that my colleagues and I are able to work with the staff to accomplish some of the things that we've had to put on the back burner. So thanks, everybody. And hopefully next year, the swearing in will be in person. Thank you.
Congratulations, Nora.
Congratulations.
I need, I'm sorry, I need to, I should have made a motion to open the meeting. But you still count, Nora, you're good.
Okay.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, okay, you want to do me?
Yes, please raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, Thomas A. Murphy.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of.
And the Constitution of.
The State of New York.
State of New York.
And the regulations of the Village of Mamaronek.
The regulations of the Village of Mamaronek.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Discharge, discharge the duties of mayor.
Discharge the duties of mayor.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for doing that. Thank you all. Like Nora, this is my third term. And I'm very grateful to people of the community to show that they have faith in what we're doing here and returning us to service. As Nora pointed out, it's been a particularly challenging few years. There's an old proverb that said, you know, may you live in interesting times. And no matter what, it's always interesting in the Village of Mamaronek. So I'm very grateful for the opportunity and the privilege to serve another two years as mayor. And I can promise you that no one's going to work harder. I might make some mistakes. Hopefully, if I do, I'll be able to admit them and try to do better in the future. But I thank everybody who returned me to this office today. Thank you. Okay. Next up on the agenda is appointment of deputy mayor. And I am appointing Kelly Winstrup to once again be deputy mayor. Hope she accepts. Kelly, thank you for doing the duty and for ably filling in for me the couple of times I couldn't make the meetings.
Thank you very much, Tom. I appreciate the trust. Thank you.
Appointments to the Sexual Harassment Committee pursuant to Village Sexual Harassment Policy. The mayor shall annually appoint one member of the village board, the three department heads, indoor supervisors, one of which shall be from the police department and one from the Department of Public Works. And tonight I am appointing Sandra DeRusa, Chief of Police. Rob Welsh, who is the head of sanitation department. Jason Pinto, who is the head of the Recreation Department. And Nora Lucas, who's trustee of Village of Mamaronek. Okay, appointment of the village prosecutor. On the motion of, I guess where you guys jump in.
Oh, sorry. So I make a motion that we resolve that we appoint John Cherico as the, to be reappointed as village prosecutor of the Village of Mamaronek.
Okay, you second? Trustees for?
I'll second, yes.
Okay. We call roll. Trustees Winstrup?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye.
Appointment of village attorney. I make a motion, Rob Spolzino be hereby reappointed village attorney to serve the pleasure of appointing the already at compensation fixed by the board of trustees. Board intends is to enter into a review process for his position.
I will second.
Or trustees Winstrup?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
You for?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
I want to thank Mrs. Spolzino for doing an excellent job this year in difficult circumstances.
Pointing to bond counsel.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Marnik hereby authorize the clerk treasurer to retain the services of the following firm on behalf of the Village of Marnik, the law offices of Jerry Jeffrey F. Scorch, as the village bonds council to handle the bond, handle all bonds and bond anticipation notes.
Second.
For all trustees Winstrup?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye. Our position for fidelity bonds for employees.
I'll make that motion that it be resolved that the crimes on fidelity bonds as examined by the Board of Trustees be executed to the village and filed with the village clerk for the following officers and employees. Clerk Treasurer, 110,000. Deputy Treasurer, 60,000. Deputy Clerk, 35,000. Mayor, 35,000. Clerk, court clerks, 20,000 each. Village justices, 10 each. Village marshals, 10 each. Parking meter collection staff and other employees, 10 each.
I second.
Okay, please. Trustees Winstrup?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye. Designation of depositories?
I'll make the motion that JP Morgan Chase Bank and Sterling National Bank be, and they hereby are designated as depositories for the village funds for the ensuing official year.
Need a second? Trustee Natchez?
Second.
Call roll, please. Trustees Winstrup?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye.
Designation of signatories?
I'll make the motion, resolve that the clerk treasurer shall inform the depositories for village funds that the following combinations of signatures on any village of Mamaronek checks are authorized. Drawn on general fund, capital fund, trust and agency endowment, and gift funds, water fund, and clerk treasurer accounts, payable account. Mayor Thomas Murphy or Kelly Winstrup, deputy mayor, and Agustino Fusco, clerk treasurer, or Sally Roberts, deputy, or Laura Versami, deputy treasurer. And drawn on payroll accounts, petty cash, trust and agency insurance deductions, trust and agency group disability, trust and agency funds, state retirement systems, trust and state guarantee and bid deposit, and money market accounts, only that of Agustino Fusco, clerk treasurer, or Sally Roberts, deputy clerk, or Laura Versami, deputy treasurer.
I second that motion.
Call roll. Trustees Winstrup?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye. Designation of official newspaper. Resolve that the Journal News is hereby designated the official newspaper of the Village of Mamaronek for ensuing official year.
I'll second.
Okay, please. Trustees Winstrup?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The four?
Sorry, I'm muted, yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye. Designation of meetings and work sessions, nights of Board of Trustees. You don't have to read the whole thing, just say it's posted with the backup.
So move.
A second.
Okay. Trustees Winstrup?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye. Okay, the next is written investment policy. This also drones on for many pages and doesn't need to be read into the record because it's with the backup. So.
So I move that we adopt our investment policy as written and as provided in backup on our tonight's agenda and on our website.
Need a second?
Victor.
Trustees for? You have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, call roll. Trustees Winstrup?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye. Procurement and credit card policy. I make the motion where as Board of Trustees adopted a procurement policy in January of 1982, which was updated and adopted again in '26 and again in May of 2018 with a credit card policy in accordance with section 103 of the General municipal law. The rest of this is in the backup. So I made that motion.
I will second.
Okay, please. Trustees Winstrup?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye. Okay, that also goes on for many pages. So let's get to the next part of the show. The Board of Appeals.
I move that Robin Kramer be reappointed a member of the Board of Appeals for a term of five years to expire December 2026.
Second.
Okay, please. Trustees Winstrup?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye. Next up is the chair.
I move that David Neufeld be appointed Chair of the Board of Appeals for a term of one year, such term to expire December 2022.
I'll second.
Call roll. Trustees Winstrup?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye. Board of Architecture Review, first appointment.
Resolve that Cindy Lee be inherent, and she hereby is reappointed as a member of the Board of Architecture Review for a term of three years, such term to expire December 2024.
Second.
Call roll. Trustees Winstrup?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Yeah.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye. Next.
Victor?
That's, that's mine. This is to appoint Larry Coyne. Reappoint him as a member of the Board of Architectural Review for a term of three years, such term to expire December 2024.
Second.
Call roll. Trustees Winstrup?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye. I make a motion that Bill Bissler is reappointed Chair of Architecture Review for a term of one year, such term to expire in December 2022.
Second.
Okay, please. Trustees Winstrup?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Board of Ethics.
I make a motion that Maria DeRose, who is an unaffiliated voter, be and hereby is appointed a member of, a member of the Ethics Board for a term of three years, such term to expire December 2024.
Thank you. Need a second? Victor?
I will, I will second that.
Call roll, please. Trustees Winstrup?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye. The next up is the appointment of the five departments representatives to traffic commission. And fire department unanimously appoints, and I guess it's reappoints, ex-chief Andrew LaRaca. I want to thank Mr. LaRaca for his service to the community, not just as a fire chief and as a fire department member his whole life, but now taking on this extra added responsibility once again. Board of Traffic Commissioners.
I think it's the Budget Committee next, no?
No.
Nope.
What are traffic commissioners?
Okay.
Page 20.
I'm sorry. Resolve that Brian Williams be and hereby reappointed as a member of the Board of Traffic Commissioners for a term of three years, such term to expire December 2024.
I second that.
Okay, please. Trustees Winstrup?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye.
Next.
I moved, I moved that Gary Kligman is appointed member of the Board of Traffic Commissioners for a term of three years, such term to expire December 2024.
Victor, you second? No, that's your second, I'm sorry. I'll second. Call roll. Trustees Winstrup?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye.
I move that Michael Starr be appointed a member of the Traffic Commission to fill an unexpired term of two years, such term to expire December, it says 2024, but is it really supposed to be, yeah, December 2023? If it's two years?
So.
Yes, I think so.
Yeah. Well, yeah, 23, you're right.
I'll second that. As amended. As amended.
Call roll. Trustees Winstrup?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye.
I'll move that Ryan Buck be appointed a member of the Board of Traffic Commissioners for an unsealed term to expire December 2023.
Actually, that should be 2022, because it's a one-year term.
It's one year. Yep.
There we go.
As amended.
Thank you for that.
Second.
As amended.
I say. Okay, please. Trustees Winstrup?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye. Next up, there is an open seat. If anybody wants to serve on traffic, please let us know. Budget Committee.
Okay. I move that Ellen Hauptman be, be reappointed a member of the Budget Committee for a term of three years, such term to expire December 2024.
Victor?
I can second that.
Uh.
With pleasure.
Trustees Winstrup?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye. I make a motion that Charles Guanolo is hereby reappointed a member of the Budget Committee for three terms to expire December 2024.
Second.
Call roll. Trustees Winstrup?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye. Okay, committee for the environment.
Resolve that Tim Whitney be and hereby is reappointed as a member of the Committee of the Environment for a term of three years, such term ending December 2024.
I second that.
Call roll. Trustees Winstrup?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye. Next up.
I'll move that Kate Hayes be appointed a member of the Committee for the Environment for a term of three years to expire December 2024.
And I'll second that. Call roll. Trustees Winstrup?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye. Open seat, so we need an extra person for Committee and Environment if anybody wants to do it. Next up is the Chair.
Resolve that Ellen Silverby and she hereby be reappointed Chair of the Committee of the Environment for a term of one year, such term to expire December 2022.
I second that.
Okay. Trustees Winstrup?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye. Arts Council.
Victor?
This is mine. Melinda, you. I've moved that she be reappointed.
Okay, I'll say.
A member of the Committee for the Arts for three years expiring. Expiring 2024.
Second, I wish, okay, please. Trustees Winstrup?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye.
I move that Carla Aber be appointed member of the Arts Council, Council for the Arts for a term of three years, the term expiring December 2024.
Second.
Okay. Trustees Winstrup?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye.
I move that Christina Lurchen be appointed a member of the Arts Council for a term of three years to expire December 2024.
I'll second.
Oh. Trustees Winstrup?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye. Resolve that Astrid Arias be and hereby is appointed member to Arts Council to fill an unexpired term of one year, such term expires in December 2022.
Second.
Okay, please. Trustees Winstrup?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye. Flood mitigation advisory committee.
I move that Tony Galber be appointed member of the Flood Mitigation Advisory Committee for a term of three years, such term to expire December 2024.
I'll second.
Call roll. Trustees Winstrup?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye. Resolve that also Ruben be and she hereby is appointed Flood Mitigation Advisory for a term of three years, such term to expire December 2024.
Second.
Okay. Trustees Winstrup?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye.
Trustee Natchez, you're up.
Resolve that Tony Galber be and hereby be appointed to the Chair of the Flood Mitigation Committee for a term of one year, such term to expire December 2022.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Harbor Coast is on Management Commission.
I'll move that Tom Berbe reappointed to the Harbor and Coastal Zone Management Commission for three years to expire 2024.
Second. Call roll. Trustees Winstrup?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye.
I move that Seamus O'Rourke be reappointed to the, as a member of the Harbor Coastal Zone Management Commission for a term of three years, such term expiring December of 2024.
And?
Yeah.
Second.
Call roll. Trustees Winstrup?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye. So we have an open seat there?
Yes.
Okay, planning board.
I move that Richard Letman be reappointed member of the Planning Board for a term of five years, such term to expire December 2026.
I'll second that.
Oh. Trustees Winstrup?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Same. And we have an open seat on that board that we're looking at a couple of candidates. The next up is Chair of the Board. I make a motion that Kathleen Sable is hereby reappointed Chair of Planning Board for a term of one year, such term to expire December 2022.
I second.
Call. Trustees Winstrup?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye. Recreation Parks Commission.
Resolve that Heather Milbar be and she be hereby reappointed as a member of the Recre, pardon, Recreation and Parks Commission for a term of three years, such term to expire December 2024.
Second.
Call roll. Trustees Winstrup?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye.
And I'll make a motion that Jamie Feinstein be appointed member of this Recreation and Parks Commission for three years expiring 2024.
Second. Call roll. Trustees Winstrup?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye. Tree Committee.
I move that Joseph Colombo be reappointed member of the Tree Committee for a term of three years, term expiring December 2024.
Second.
Call roll. Trustees Winstrup?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye. Next.
I make a motion that Matthew Tolleson be appointed a member of the Tree Committee for a term of three years, such term to expire December 2024.
I'll second.
Call roll. Trustees Winstrup?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye. And we have an open seat on that board. Next up is the Chairs.
Resolve that Beverly Sherrod and Gail Crower be and they hereby are appointed co-chairs of the Tree Committee for a term of one year, such term expiring December 2022.
Second.
Call, call, call roll. Trustees Winstrup?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye. Marine Education Center, we are waiting to see if we have any appointments to the LMC Board of Control.
I'm resolved that Mayor Murphy be appointed a member of the Large Mamaronek Cable TV Board of Control for a term of one year, such term to expire December 2021.